...to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with number T and justice for all.
First on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda of Agenda 119, 2016, regularly being as presented.
Second.
We have a motion in the second, I'll favorizing that.
Aye.
The opposed motion case. Next we have the approval of the consent agenda items.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second.
The motion in the second, I'll favorizing that.
Aye.
Next we have public participation. Everybody's been there. Okay, next we have reported the superintendent, Dr. Lindsay.
I'd like to start with, included in your board packet was a letter from Margie Bandezen that indicated to the district that we were fully accredited under the provisions of MCP5. It almost seems that it's a little bit anticlimactic to get that letter because of all the work and effort that has gone into getting to that point of the word. We're very pleased to be fully accredited and truly a testament to the leadership of the buildings and the hard work and teachers and support of the parents and community and the work that students do as well, so I'm very pleased to have that letter. Annual school board election is April 5th, 2016. Filing ended today at 5:00 PM. I'd like to offer congratulations to Mr. Rudloff and Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
They're two incumbents. They were the only people that filed, so due to that, we will not be required to have an election in April and they will be put back on the board for another three-year term. So, congratulations to both of them. Speaking of school board members, this, we're coming up on Missouri School Board Recognition Week. In your package you notice there was a proclamation from the governor recognizing board members all across the state for their service to public schools and to the children and the communities that they live. There's also certificates at your place from Missouri School Boards Association. And, of course, personally, I want to thank each and every one of you for your service as board members. It's not an easy job, you receive no compensation, and, you know, I think I can speak for all of us here at the district, we appreciate the support that you give us and the way you all work together so well in the interest of our kids. So, thank you for that, we really appreciate it. We also have a special presentation from the elementaries.
Well, we want you to know, as Dr. Lindsay said, everyone in the district truly appreciates everything you do and the support you give all the buildings. The second graders worked very diligently to tell you their thoughts on the school board and what they do, which is very interesting, and we know it is a work of the heart, so we have a little bit of chocolate here for you. So, we hope you enjoy your thanks from the second grade students, and we'll give you each one.
I certainly didn't have enough room for all my, I keep them and read them, they're just so fun to watch.
Well, each classroom, it just so happens we have seven, second grade classrooms, four in our building and three in Bloomsdale, so that worked out great, each classroom, one of you in, and really some hearts of everything.
So each of you were adopted by a second grade class?
Yes. You'll have to write them back, but you'll have to hear that.
They're picturing their way to come here, the last year.
I read through them. They're pretty funny.
Oh, yes.
Mr. Broderick.
Yeah, we're all mature kids.
I'll see that you get candy.
We're gonna leave that up to you.
I got it.
Very well.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, and you're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay.
We know how much we feel for you guys, so all of us working together, working with you guys, this is what made the center the best ever. And I tell that when I go there, I feel, and that's been a long time, they've been better. I think they're starting to believe me. Or they don't argue if they could've done it.
We also, as far as the bond issue project update, as you know, we received bids on packages 4A, 4F, and we'll review those a little later tonight. Kindergarten registration is coming up at Saint John Elementary April 2nd and at Bloomsdale Elementary April 9th. Don't call yet to schedule appointments, there will be an announcement as to when you can, when you can do that, but it is very important that you participate in kindergarten registration if you have children that are coming into school with their kindergarten names, so we encourage you to do that. Principal reports.
I'd like to start by thanking the SGHS faculty, students, clubs, and athletes who pulled together over Christmas break to help our local residents and businesses during the flooding. Luckily, that didn't turn out to be near what we dreaded it might be, but it was just really neat for me to go to the basketball tournaments and to be around town and to hear the great things that were going on. When you're in the building every day and you're seeing it, you kind of know and orchestrate it. When you're in that situation where you can't and things are just happening and you're hearing of the great things happening, it's a really good feeling, so I'd like to thank them. I'd like to congratulate Pyle Patel, who was elected the Region 6 FCCLA First Vice President, and Vivian Vaughn, who was elected as the Region 6 FCCLA State Vice President. And again, Dr. Edderton does an amazing job at that program, you're gonna hear a little bit more, but year in and year out, we end up with state officers, and that's just an incredible feat for a program. Vivian Vaughn and Addie Stiegel had been dedicating their time to finding ways to comfort patients and their families at Saint Louis Children's Hospital. Their project is a Star Event for Family Career and Community Leaders of America. With the help of SGE, thank you, they were able to donate thirty complete bags and two-hundred-and-fifty extra hygiene items to help the families who have to stay at the hospital, and through donations of Flea's from the Women's Club of Saint Genevieve, family and friends, and with the help of other FCCLA members, they were able to make and donate thirty blankets to the hospital. The student, three students from Saint Jen High School helped teach children about the importance of teamwork and anti-competitiveness. On January 13th, this project was also part of a group Stars event for FCCLA. The three students were Deander Boland, Abby Bates, and Isaac Bales, and they visited Mrs. Heberly's second grade class at Saint Jen Elementary. The students had a great time and learned new aspects about something that was already familiar to them. Two students from FCCLA completed the Star Event project, they were Ashley Kreider and Jennifer Burr, and they visited the preschool students and teachers at Saint Jen Elementary and Bloomsdale Elementary. Kreider and Burr worked with the children to teach them the importance of hand washing and germs, and all the students, both young and old, learned something from this activity. It was interesting to talk to those girls. I also have this one in here because I really want to thank the hard work and efforts of Dr. Flea, Dr. Green, and Dr. Edderton. It's really neat as a district when they go out and they work to serve, in this case, some of the youngest students in our community, but it also helps to serve my students, and I really appreciate the way that when we bring these projects to the table, it just sort of encompasses everything. So you take, we're serving this really young group, and now we're being able to provide college credit in the CDA program for our high school students, and they're all working together, and that's just really neat for me, so I compliment those ladies for a great job and just opportunities across the board for our students. Also, FCCLA held a running of the halls on Friday, January 8th, to help raise money for Saint Jude's. The students and staff participated in a miracle minute while they learned more about the hospital from a representative, and in talking to the students, the biggest takeaway they had from that was the idea that here's this place where children can go to and the parents are never built, that all of this is funded by the generosity of even what they did on that day. Congratulations to all speech students who competed in Mesa. Selena Kreidler, Nicole Bowman, Kirsten Schrum, and Thomas Singlman competed in duet acting, and Caitlin Bloom competed in poetry reading. Pyle Patel and Morgan Yuzel placed second. Abby Stolzer placed fourth. Caitlin Bloom in Lily Bird placed fifth. Austin Caldwell placed sixth. Morgan Yuzel and Austin Caldwell placed seventh. They then traveled to Sekman High School for a competition. The invitational meet involved nineteen teams, and SGHS had an outstanding finish and took home second place. So I'm really proud of that, and again, I want to thank you guys, because a couple years ago, you were asked to add a second coach to that team to really kind of bolster what Mrs. Google, I think, was doing very well. You did that, and it's just continuing to pay dividends. They're getting to compete far more, they're getting to compete on higher levels, and it shows here. Caitlin App, Madison Rainey, and Madison Durus all took a first place. Brooke Wyler, Caitlin Bloom, Tom Singlman, and Kirsten Schrum all took a second place. Austin Caldwell took a third, and Morgan Yuzel took a fifth. They, of course, are coached by Mrs. Google and Mrs. Yuzel, and I congratulate them on those amazing accomplishments. Also, we were pleased to announce that the MSHSAA Scholastic Achievement Award winners are in for the Fall Team Sports, and nine out of our thirteen groups were eligible and earned this award. Three of the teams have received the Distinguished Achievement Award are freshman football, 3.02, cheerleaders with GPA 3.11, and Emeralds Dance with 3.15. Six additional teams received the Outstanding Achievement Award, and they are freshman volleyball at 3.38, girls cross-country at 3.48, JV volleyball at 3.53, boys cross-country at 3.6, varsity softball at 3.66, and varsity volleyball at 3.91. So, yeah, so I want to congratulate those student athletes and their coaches. Also, I don't normally cover curricular stuff, but the students in Mr. Wyler's health class, I'll get this out, recently learned hands-only CPR from Nurse Lidle. She also taught the students first aid tips and how to handle situations that involve choking, bleeding, asthma, and severe allergic reactions. And kind of one of the reasons why I want to talk about this is, again, the great work that Nurse Lidle has done, is we brought her into the building and working with kids and just her rapport with students. She's very much engaged with them and very much so looking at ways to get out and kind of assist others, not just, you know, be a nurse, but be a part of the team, and I really appreciate her work and her attitude towards the students and what we see day in and day out, so I thank her. Also, a big thing that we did this year, the SGHS and Mr. John Mooney, our Director of Bands, hosted the annual MAAA Honor Band on January 11th in the Performing Arts Center. This was something that traditionally had always taken place at one location. We kind of thought and said, hey, we think we have a good location, we'd like to give it a shot, and I'm pleased to say that everything went smoothly. It will be back at that other location next year because we're going on a rotation basis, but as part of the plan, they used to have two nights' practice and one night of performance. They've decided to help make all the travel work for everybody, they're gonna move it to one night of practice and the final performance. So at this stage of the game, I'm pleased to say that it should be returning after next year, and we should now be in the rotation for MAAA Bands. So I'm gonna thank Mr. Mooney for his hard work on that one. And finally, Nicole Upchurch and Paige Johnson had their hair cut during a running of the halls for Saint Baldur's fundraiser on Friday, January 15th. They say it was to raise money for Saint Baldur's, but I really think it was just so they could look like me and Dr. Lindsay. I think that was, that the more they saw, the thought, that's what I like. And this was a way that they could, they could get to, get to that point. What was really neat about it was Mr. Werner was selected to cut Paige Johnson's hair, and Dr. Boyd was selected to cut Nicole's hair, and true to form, Mr. Werner and Dr. Boyd had a competition over it in which, I believe it was Mr. Werner won. So, that's a report from the high school.
Oh, my gosh.
Good evening, everyone. We don't have quite as much going on as the high school. I was collecting things for this, and I went back and counted because I couldn't pull out stuff, so we've got thirteen days since our last meeting. We've got a band concert right after our last meeting on December 16th. Mrs. Elders and the students did an excellent job at that. We held our middle school Christmas party at the Do Drop Inn, and I want to thank Jerry Diesel for giving us that idea. I polled everybody, and they, they want to try that again next year. That was a blast, they really accommodated us out there. We got to sit and chat in the back room for a while, and then everybody was left to their own devices. We had an earthquake fire drill on January 8th. We're getting more efficient at locating missing kids and identifying where they are, whether it's counselor's office, the nurse's office, stuff like that. We had a wing celebration on January 15th. Wings stands for we're, we're into noticing good students, and students have to meet various criteria regarding tardies, no discipline referrals and stuff like that, and they get to celebrate an hour for their good behavior and good academic work. Amy Meyer and Amy Rowland began enrollment for the 2016-2017 school year for sixth and seventh graders, it happened last week, and Mrs. Rowland started eighth grade enrollment today, and it will continue throughout the week if we're here. Fall sports, wrestling wrapped up just before Christmas break. Basketball is still going on, we currently have the seventh grade tournament this week and the eighth grade tournament next week, and hopefully we'll have some good results in that report next meeting. Saint Genevieve Middle School Feature Staff Teacher this month was Rachel Kine. Rachel is a quiet soul that does awesome things with little fanfare. She cares tremendously about her students and has a plethora of history information to share with them. Did I mention that she's the biggest history geek I have ever met? I didn't write that. That's saying something too, considering our social studies department, they're, they're all into history reading. Rachel is enthusiastic about history and is able to bring that out in her students as well. She teaches them about work ethic, responsibility, choices, and consequences. She helps our eighth graders grow up a bit, and they are better for having been in her class. Mrs. Kine has also done such a great job implementing the Leader in Me program in her classroom, her students are always excited to come in and learn and are very respectful to each other. Her students know just what to do when a sub is in the room and are becoming leaders in their classroom, so congratulations to Rachel Kine. That's the middle school.
Can I piggyback something on that?
Sure, absolutely.
One of the things that I wanted to say, because you know every now and then you have a bad day. Friday last week, I know, it's hard to believe, especially, I know, exactly. It doesn't happen, but you do. And Friday, when they were doing their wings thing, I was, it wasn't the best day, seventh hour I was in, I needed to talk to Miss Elders about something, and her group that was left was working on Go Big Green. And so I was like, hey, I want to hear this, so they got out their instruments, and that group that had just learned Go Big Green that day played it for me several times and then was kind enough to oblige me in a selfie with that group that we tweeted out, and they just had a blast, and it sent me home with a huge smile. So I want to thank Mrs. Elders, that group, and Mr. Taylor for all the hard work they do. It was just a neat moment, and I wanted to share that with you guys. Thank you.
I thought you were Christmas picture.
You liked that one too?
Legendary.
Well, since we last met, we did a lot of hard work and got ready for Christmas as well. There was a lot going on in the elementary to celebrate Christmas. On December 17th, we had our Student of the Month luncheon with our counselor, Mrs. Grand Major, and the habit that we focused on for citizenship was think-win-win, so we had a student from each classroom that best represented a think-win-win attitude. We also had a silly sweater spirit day in staff potluck on the 16th, and the kids really got into that, and everyone stepped out in silly Christmas things, and of course, on the 18th, Santa came and the parties commenced. So at that time, also, we received our polo shirts for you, so we also wanted to tell you thank you on behalf of all the faculty and staff, many, many of them have shared with me to make sure I share with you how awesome they love their shirts, so we've all been wearing them. Both Lori and I had fourth and fifth grade MRI training also on December 16th and 17th, right before the break, and that about wrapped up the, wrapped up December. So then in January, as Dr. Mr. Haney pointed out, we've done a lot of collaboration with the high school. It seems like we're doing more and more all the time, and we really, really enjoy that. And a lot of times it's with FPLA or FCCLA, but the student athletes come and read to the classes, and all sorts of great things are going on with that. Both Lori and I continue to post weekly great work on our brag and drag and boards. We have student-led announcements, I know in my building, we are down to first and second graders, which, oh my goodness, it just doesn't get any cooler. And so they come in the office and we practice every morning, and we've focused on habit two, three, and four so far in January, so that's awesome. Our grade level attendance keeps really soaring. We've had an overall leader this year's fifth grade with 97.58%, and second and fourth grade line in December with each with 97.25%. So our attendance, we're really proud, and the kids are really trying hard. We had quarterly awards assemblies for second grade, for second quarter for all grades, we had our quarterly awards assemblies, and we also had dare graduation last week for fifth grade, and I have to give some kudos to Officer Clark, she just did an awesome job, especially for it being her first time, but it really could've been her 10th time. She did a fabulous job. And Mr. Ingelman was our guest speaker, and he shared a lot of valuable experiences with the children about scouting and just many great things, and all in all, it was a really good, good evening. Like the other buildings, we've had fire evacuation drills, and we too had learned how a lot of things, like last time, our big learning point was accounting for all the current teachers. Sometimes they don't sign in, so if they don't sign in, we don't know if they're there. So we had a talk with them about always being sure to sign in and volunteer, so there was this volunteer was like, where do I go, where do I go? You know, so we really, every time, we learn a little bit more, so that's great. Lori and I have both been really focusing on math in our assessments in our buildings for grades three and five, and boy, it was a bear. Grades three and five went through both an ELA and a math practice online math test, and it was grueling and very insightful, and so now we're looking at the data to help us get ready for the big tests this spring. I'm gonna share some, oh, I want to share my feature teacher for January was Bethany Kettings. Things said about Bethany include, I'm juggling Lori's report and mine here, that Bethany is a great teacher who builds strong relationships with her students, they work hard for her and respect her, she's not afraid of the challenge and is involved in many school events. Another nominees included Jessica Lee, Andrea Fritsch, Carrie James, Courtney Fowler, and Megan Keeker. So, our super staff representative that was selected was Karen Wyler. Kind things said about her is that she helps everyone tremendously, she gives, teaches everyone the office routines and shows everyone where everything is at with a smile on her face. She never hesitates to stop what she's doing and to help someone, she stays past her contracted time to help everybody get done everything they need to do, and she is a wonderful asset to our building. So, other super staff nominees included Donna Roth, Jill Wyler, Peggy Bonner, Joyce Joker, Sue Hecklin, and Sharon Smith. So that's an update on us, and I have a few words from Lori. Lori didn't give me January notes, so I'll make sure she brings those next time, but in December, she and her staff did some fun holiday prep. Let me find that in here. They had teacher staff and students participate in a Christmas theme that week before Christmas. Monday was Christmas PJ Day, Tuesday ugly sweater day, Wednesday Christmasy dress day, Thursday Christmas hat, sock, tie, and headgear, and Friday nice Christmas attire. And then also in her building in the month of December, Judy House Coligan continued with the family nutrition education program for first and second graders, and she also did that in our building too, and it went over great, and everyone was sad when it wrapped up. We love, love it when she comes. They also have continued with their birthday books and had eighteen books in, eighteen students in December who received a book. They celebrated their AR wall for 100, 200, 300 points during the month of December. Forgetting the book. I think that's it, I think that's all she included for this report, so. She too participates in all those MRI and RTIs, which I'm sure that's something we need to share and collaborate on. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
They were included in the standard, standard bills.
We'll go to unfinished business, instructional program presentation in middle school.
And you might notice that we don't have middle school science.
They were so excited.
We decided to postpone them until February in light of what.
Okay, and we'll go to new business, the proposed calendar.
Yes, let me talk a little bit about the process and, and to clarify, the calendar that is in your packet this time is not something that we're recommending, it's just a part of the process that this district has used in the past. And basically, the first step is to take the current year calendar, the 15-16 calendar, and roll it over to the new year, to the 16-17 year, using corresponding dates. And so that is put out for this, this first version for review. We do know that there's some fairly significant issues. We'll go through the process, we'll get feedback from, from faculty as we always have, there's also a calendar committee that we'll work through, we'll fine tune things, and then come back to the board with, with the calendar that we are recommending at some point. Two major issues that we are already aware of, that exist just by taking the calendar and rolling it over, is that, for one thing, with it being leap year, it's a two-day shift instead of a one-day shift as it normally would be. And so the school's start date would be August 12th, which is jur de fete weekend. So we know that's an issue that we'll have to take a look at as we work through the process. Their other issue is, is that Christmas break using corresponding dates would be on Friday, December 16th, which is nine days before Christmas, and so we think that is something else that through the process will, will be changed in some way. I know we have had some, some positive feedback on the calendar that, that was approved by the board for this year, and we'll try to incorporate those things moving forward, and then, you know, of course, as we work through the process and get feedback from, from faculty and through the committee process, then, you know, we'll, we'll make other changes as, as we need to. Hopefully, we'll have a calendar ready for your approval at either February or March. So, any questions or any other issues with the calendar that you know of right now that you'd like for the committee to consider as we go through that process?
I just thought it started off early.
Yeah. If there's something that you think of later, shoot me an email or something, and I'll be sure and share that, share that information.
Do you think that will remain the blackout week or?
I think that probably will remain the blackout week.
Has it had some people already done scheduled vacations?
Exactly, and that's why we went ahead and set those dates. Mr. Haney, do you anticipate?
No, I don't anticipate the blackout date changing if that's what you're asking, because quite simply, the start of athletics doesn't change regardless of where we set our calendar. The only question is, are we gonna start on the football jamboree or are we gonna start around the first game? That's the only question, and given that those are fixed items, I see the blackout date being a fixed item. It's my speculation.
When does the jamboree?
I thought the jamboree was the 12th if we rolled one way, and the first game was the 19th if we rolled the other, so, yeah, that could be something to consider too, the jamboree on the jur de fete weekend.
Yeah, I'm not sure which way that.
Yeah, I'm almost positive, I'm going off memory, but I'm almost positive we talked to Mr. Nick, so if we went one route, it would be the one, and if we went the other route, it would be the other.
So it's issues like that that we'll have to work through as we, as we fine tune, fine tune the calendar. You know, keeping in mind that, you know, the calendar is an educational calendar, and we want, we might look for something that, that makes the most sense from an educational standpoint, so.
We'll move on to the addition of the special Olympics coach.
Yeah, I sent some information to you about our need to create a special Olympics coach position. Our district has participated in Special Olympics for 25-plus years. In recent years, the level of participation has, has kind of gone down, but within the last couple of years, there's been, the MAAA is now doing kind of a conference Special Olympics event that nearly every district in the conference participates in with the exception of us. There's some, some other events that we could participate in, there's quite a bit of time that's involved. In the past, like I said, we've got a volunteer coach, she feels like it's more than what she can handle at this point, and, you know, it's something that, that with the certification requirements and the practice requirements and then going to the events, which are usually on the weekend. and the practice requirements and then going to the events, which are usually on the weekend, uh, it seems appropriate to, uh, to pay a stipend that would be comparable to, uh, some of the other activities that we've got a stipend for. Uh, Dr. Green, do you have anything you wanna add to that? Any questions about that? This motion would be to create a position. There is a job description that's also attached.
I move to approve the addition of Special Olympics Coach and accompanying job description effective immediately.
Right, I'm taking it.
I have motion on the second, I'll press it now. I oppose. Mr. McCandless?
I move that the Board of Education holds closed meeting with a closed record and a closed vote following the regular open meeting on February 16th, 2016, to be held in the RW House Library, 715 Washington Street, St. Genevieve, Missouri, for the purpose of discussing the voting upon the following items of business. Legal action, cause and effect in our litigation, lease, purchase, or sale of real estate, hiring, firing, disbanding, or promoting particular employees, proceedings involving the mental or physical health of an identifiable individual, scholastic probation, expulsion, or graduation of identifiable individuals, testing and examination materials, welfare cases of identifiable individuals, preparation for negotiations with employee groups, software codes for electronic data processing and documentation thereof, specifications for competitive bidding until approved or published, sealed bids and related documents until the bids are opened, sealed proposals and related documents until all proposals are rejected, or any documents related to a negotiated contract until the contract is executed, individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, or records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment, records protected from disclosure by law, scientific and technological innovation to which the owner has proprietary interest, records relating to the municipal hotlines established for your recording of abuse and wrongdoing, confidential or privileged communication within audit, operational guidelines and policies and specific response plans for preventing or responding to a critical incident, existing or proposed security system with structural plans of district property, the portion of the record that identifies security systems or access codes, records that identify and would allow unauthorized access to or unlawful disruption to configuration of components or the operation of a computer, computer system, computer network, or telecommunications network, credit card numbers, personal identification numbers, digital certificates, physical and virtual keys, access codes, or authorization codes that are used to protect electronic transactions. I further move the notice of this meeting and attempt to the Genevieve folks that is required by law.
Have a motion on the second, rail call, Eric Walter?
Yes.
Bill Bogdan?
Yes.
Tyler Kyle Lapsat, John Dante?
Yes.
Perry Daniel Yes, Mark Risen?
Yes.
Greg Rudolph?
Yes.
Motion carried, six oh.
Move to the closed session with closed record and closed vote after a short break.
Is the motion on the second, I'll press it now. I oppose. Motion.